Let's grab some jabs.
That is not going to work. Whoever used the encoder last to reset all the settings will abide. It will be known, be 10. Correct. Whoever used that last on the encoder, reset everything on the encoder. Get set by town hall streams. There are no ability to reset that. They're going to have to reset that. Uh, the last time we had a meeting and we worked on it. Whoever used that encoder last, did something and re- reset it and town hall streams are going to have to come and put it all back together. Somebody can do that.
Yeah, let's do that.
All right, it's 7:01. Oh, it's going to record. Don't misunderstand it. That's recording and it's live now. Uh, and we'll upload it when we can get the, uh, the chip.
Oh, they say recording.
Correct, correct. Oh, no, no, we record everything. If it's streamed, then we can delete it, but if it's not streamed, then we provide that to town hall streams and they'll, they'll upload it. All right, it's, uh, 7:02. We're going to get this meeting started. Um, we're going to call it to order. Uh, Newfield Select Board Meeting for Tuesday, May 7th, 2024. Uh, first up is Conservation Commission.
All right, um, we were brought to a meeting in the last select board meeting on April 23rd for a complaint of bias and about, uh, an offensive comment allegedly made by a member of the public. More assertions came up at the end of that meeting. Um, I sent a letter in support of our response. Did you see that letter?
Yep.
Juan here.
Yeah, I'm Chris Griffith, the Chair of Conservation Commission. Members of the Newfields Conservation Commission recall this select board meeting on April 23rd, 2024 to discuss an accusation of bias and of a defensive comment allegedly made about a member of the public. For the end of that meeting, further assertions were made by former select board member Michael Kessler and current select board members. These assertions directly questioned the question of the commission's ethics, professionalism, integrity. Furthermore, these alleged violations were used as supporting evidence to hold open the reappointment of Conservation Commission Co-Chair Jeff Cooter. The examples from Conservation Commission minutes cited by select board member Lee Harmon as proof of unethical advocacy all occurred prior to a warrant article even being drafted or submitted to the town. The commission firmly believes we were acting within our purview when advocating for town conservation of the rug property. We have consulted our bylaws, RSA 36A, the handbook for New Hampshire's municipal conservation commissions, and with attorneys at the New Hampshire Municipal Association. These consultations confirm our position that the commission acted ethically and within our role. The following points from our research and from a phone consultation with an attorney of the New Hampshire Municipal Association outline advocacy goal of Conservation Commission to permit it to take. One, when working on a conservation project, Conservation Commissions may promote the project and take steps to educate, persuade, convince the public and town boards of the value of the project. Two, promoting the project and steps to educate, persuade, and convince the public and town boards can take the form of informational meetings, signs, one-on-one discussions with the public, public hearings, presentations, site logs, pamphlets, maps, websites, articles, and other measures the Conservation Commission deems necessary for its work. Conservation Commissions can work to craft a warrant article. To craft a warrant article to support a conservation project. Not only can they contribute to the language of the article, they are permitted to actively participate in soliciting signatures for a petition to have a warrant article placed on the ballot. A direct quote from a lawyer of the Municipal Association was, "I ask, are we allowed to participate in soliciting signatures for petition?" He said, "Of course, that's the only way to get it on the ballot." After a warrant article has been approved, a Conservation Commission may continue to provide the public with information about the project. Given these guidelines, we believe the Conservation Commission was acting within its defined role for the good of the town, and we ask the select board to correct statements made to the contrary. If the select board requires further clarification, we request a town attorney to consult it. We would like these steps to be made publicly and on the record at the May 7th, 2024 Select Board Meeting.
Comments?
So where can we go from here? That's the question. What's, what's your?
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll have, I have several points. Uh, I'll be the first to acknowledge, my assumption was that advocacy, uh, advocating a warrant article is contrary statutes, not contrary statutes. It is allowed, but because something's allowed doesn't mean you should do it. I'll give you some examples. We could hold our select board meetings at 1:00 in the afternoon. In doing so, it would prohibit almost anybody from attending those meetings. We don't do that, right? Because you shouldn't do that. You should, you should be having these meetings so public can attend. In our meetings, it is perfectly allowed that absolutely nobody from the public comments on anything. That it is a meeting amongst the board members and they adjourn and everyone goes their way, but you shouldn't do that. Under the same vein, I would argue that public boards, if you want to advocate for this outside, outside of public, absolutely have advocates. But public boards should not be taking, in my opinion, and, and this is what I said last time, in my opinion, you shouldn't be using your position as a public official to take a position and to use your board to organize for a warrant article. That's what I said last meeting and I stopped.
Not what you said last, last meeting, you said you're advocating for a warrant article that's on the ballot.
Yeah.
Everything he cited, that's what you said, you said it four times.
No, no, no.
I watched it three times, I watched the meeting three times today. You didn't say anything about advocating about the creation of a warrant.
No, 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 I didn't, I have no problem if, if the Conservation Commission wants to go out and solicit signatures, I have no problem. I have the problem when you are in, after the warrant article goes on the ballot, that you're.
None of that was cited, none of that was cited in the last meeting. Everything he said was from November, December, word bar, December 6th, a month before the warrant.
I, is Kessler here?
I think he was.
Tesla, Tesla, Tesla had indicated, and this is what the conversation stemmed from, was that at the meetings in, I believe it was February, January and February, that the Conservation Commission was basically doing organization for the warrant article that was going on the ballot at the meeting.
But for you to hold up his reappointments without reviewing those minutes and just taking his word for it, I read the minutes, there's no advocacy. It's information at that point. And they discussed it deliberately.
The minutes, Chris, you, you, you know as well as I do, the minutes are very thin about what goes on. Well, we hold it, oh, hold on. We have, we have a meeting here, we have 11 pages of minutes in great detail about what goes on, and I get it.
Our meetings are much shorter than theirs.
I, I, and I get it, but what I'm saying here is, this is what was the discussion last time, and nobody, nobody said from when Mike Tesla read the argument that they were basically organizing and figuring out how to do grassroots advocacy as a board. Uh, yeah, I, I, I do have a problem with that, and as I said.
He said he started grassroots advocacy in December. We've been working on this for three to four years.
And they're entitled to.
He didn't know what he was talking about. He also tried to vote with our board repeatedly. Is that his role?
Again, let me finish. So I have a problem with it. As I said, you can do it. I don't think it's proper. I don't. And if this board come January had every meeting done grassroots organizational discussions with people in town about how to defeat the article, I think people in this town would be upset, and I think they would have had right to do it, to be upset if we had done that, but we didn't do it despite the fact that the, the, the member of the board wanted this article to pass. My point here is, is there are things that you should or should not do, and my personal opinion is some lines were stepped over. I had a, I have a problem with that. That's, that's the end.
Is that your personal opinion or your opinion as a governing body of the town?
This is my opinion, I'm not talking for the other members of the board.
Okay, hold on, the reappointment, you use it as supporting evidence?
Wait, wait, understand something. We're not required to reappoint anyone.
I know, I know.
So.
But there's no grounds for it, that's the idea. There's no grounds for not reappointing.
The grounds for either supporting or denying an appointment lies with the individuals who are voting on that measure. There's no requirement there.
Jeff, I'm not going to argue that whatsoever. However, at the end of the meeting last time, we were told to refer to the answer we needed to hold off, which we did. And these are the answers we got.
Yep.
And now you're telling us that you're, that you're upholding an appointment or I don't know what you're going to do, but based on your opinion. And that doesn't, I mean, that doesn't seem right.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
We've got two separate issues here. One is the issue, maybe more. Well, I'm going to start with two. One is the issue on the reappointment attempt, and that's what precipitated most of this conversation. Now, the response that we got, which became the second issue, which Michael was talking about in the reattemp, is to me a deflection, a primary issue, and it, I'll support and listen to all the discussion and we can go back and talk about it as much as we want, but the primary issue which I see being reflected by this issue is a reappointment. Now, one of the issues I have on this, Chris, is when we talk about here, an offensive comment allegedly made about a member of the public. We've had two people come in that were at that meeting and there's no alleged under according to them, and I have no reason to doubt their credibility. So I see this as a deflection. It's two separate issues to address, and what's transpired as far as the advocacy for the rug property is a complete synergy.
Okay, let's talk about the advocacy then, and then we can talk about the reappointment. Because the handbook for management of conservation commissions explicitly says, our role is to identify valuable pieces of property, prioritize which properties we're going to go after, come up with a plan for doing it, advocate for the public, educating them as to why these are important projects, and then get it on the ballot. Okay, but that's what it says we're supposed to do. If you're saying as a, as a select board that we're not supposed to do that, what's the point?
I, I don't think anybody has said that.
Jeff, you just did.
I think you're, you're, you're missing, you're missing the point I'm making. You want to get something on the ballot? Great, you got it on the ballot. Then don't use your public board to then take it.
I'm talking about everything beating up to getting on the ballot. Why do we change it? Everything throughout the meeting was prior to December. Everything he cited as evidence that we did something wrong, the word bar, the QR codes, the websites, the meetings, were all prior to the warrant article being written.
Okay.
That's what he been accusing of.
That information, the, the information that we were given at the last meeting was that, um, January, February, into March, that it was in that timeframe that those activities were taking place.
But it was wrong immediately.
It was wrong.
And it becomes like, it becomes like a sale on witch trials. He said this and that.
But wait, 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 wait. Wait, it's, but it wasn't refuted at the last meeting. So I'm taking the information that's made public, that nobody on the Conservation Commission at the last meeting said, that's incorrect.
He didn't have a chance to prepare for it. Clearly hoped that you were meant for.
We, we, hold on, we, we sat here and talked about this for 45 minutes. Nobody, nobody in that entire time said those activities took place prior to the warrant article. Nobody did. Now, that's the information I have in front of me. Wait a minute, that, that's the information I have in front of me. Since then, if what you're saying is, nope, all that activity took place prior, okay, great, I'll take your word on it. But don't, don't get upset that with the lack of, because I'm not sitting on the, on Conservation Commission, that is the information that is provided. Nobody refutes that information, nobody from the Conservation Commission refutes that information at the last meeting. So what am I supposed to believe or expect? That the information wasn't refuted by the very people who were here?
Because they didn't, they didn't, they're getting thrown a, a fastball with this concerted orchestration of, oh, we have another witness here on, on XYZ time, he said this and that.
Again, we sat here for 45 minutes talking specifically about this. And that's fine, Chris, and that's fine, great. So you're coming here and saying that the information was incorrect from the last meeting?
Yes.
Great, okay, great.
Okay. Will you take back the public's opinion of Jeff's case of that information in our entire commission?
I, I still have, I still have a, a problem with a member of the board denigrating somebody.
I'm not talking about, I'm talking about the.
Oh, I, look, I said, I said.
The accusation of unethical advocacy.
I, I said upfront, I was wrong about the fact that it was illegal. I operate from the, from the standpoint that I thought it was, and absolutely, I was wrong about that. I have no problem acknowledging that.
It's not illegal, it's actually what.
You're supposed to be.
What our role was supposed to be based on the, 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 the Conservation Commission.
But again, but again, Chris, what you, what you want me to, I, I'm not exactly sure what you want me to say, because again, I think my statement that I made at the last meeting, based on the information in front of me, made sense. Now, if what you're saying is it all took place before the warrant article, great, I, I admit, I was wrong about that. I don't have a problem admitting that. If that, if that, if what you're saying is it all took place before the ballot, great, fine.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay.
And that's what the record reflects.
No, and I appreciate that, new letters, part of the record, and great, we, we can move on from that. Do you want to deal with the other issue?
We can do it now or we can do it on camera.
Do it now?
The issue that I have is that, one, I don't think it's an alleged comment. I, I have great faith in the people that are reporting, and said they were there, that it was retrieved twice to Mr. Kessler, and as we discussed last time, that's unacceptable. There's no antidote to that. When I asked you, Jeff, how long you been doing this, volunteering for seven years, commend me, but if it's been seven weeks or seven months, then if you go, well, that's acceptable. It is not acceptable for someone, a board member in town to denigrate somebody because they have money, they have some money, want to come in and change it, see if they can amend the easement or work to find a solution that takes care of it and puts it on. Not acceptable. I had experienced it. There was an argument you engage in with another member of the select board that causes a civilian, a citizen in the town would walk out of the room and perish him. Three times. And, and a three.
Three times?
Well, when I came to the conservation that you went in January, I think it was.
Can we call it a commission? You guys always say community. It's not any more.
Okay, I'll go with ConCon, House of Representatives. Okay, with ConCon, and it was, it was in February, David, and we were talking about the rug property, and you went over there, and I said, I, I guess you agree with you, and the response was, well, maybe you'll figure out that we know what we're talking about, and it went on from there. And Mr., Mike Kessler just kind of rolled his eyes and looked at me and goes, holy small soul.
This is about Article 4, okay?
No, this is about Article 1 that we were talking about. Because I had issues and I still had issues with the appraisal at the time, and as if you wanted the letter that I wrote prior to the election as a citizen, not a member of the select board, I said, I support conservation of property, but I have a real issue with this appraisal, the way it was drafted, and there are numerous faults and errors in that document, and that was one of my main problems with the whole process as it transpired. In addition to ConCon advice we had gotten from counsel on the potential liability of the town financially. So those are the issues, and it wasn't, we agreed, disagreed, it was like both girls blazing in, you know, like, okay, I got it. And I think you remember the conversation you had with Michael over here at the stage when you asked for writing, respond to an email that you'd sent, and I don't, I never received it.
So now you're reading a conversation that happened outside of ConCon meetings?
As regards to your position as a member of the ConCon, yes.
As a member of ConCon, as an advocate of a.
No, an advocate does not excuse at ConCon personal attacks, period.
Do you think that when I approached you to ask you that question, that my intention was to attack you?
No, I'm not talking about that, because you're not listening to what I'm saying to you.
You just talked about it.
Well, stop and listen to me again. Because what transpired, you asked me a question, I responded, I hadn't seen it, and then you asked Michael, and it escalated, and it got, it was unacceptable. I was, I was, I was a witness to that event, I was not a participant in that.
This is on record?
I'm making it right now, if you, what, the conversation?
Because there's a lot of isolated issues with this. If none of it's on record, then it's one person can remember it against the other, and quite honestly, there is a huge agenda tonight, so.
There's a what? I'm sorry, there's a what?
There's a very large agenda tonight, so with all due respect to everybody's time, you can say, how can I remember it against the other?
Excuse me, excuse me. This is our, this is the select board meeting, please, please. No, 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 hold on. Can, can we, can we keep to the topic at hand? Okay? And, and whether this is a long meeting or a short meeting is irrelevant, we're going to get through everything we have on, on our agenda tonight. That's the nature of these meetings. Anyways, continue.
That's what, temperament, and that's what I'm surprised by.
What's the resolution?
We got to the same point last meeting. Everything's, we all understand.
And, and the point is, Chris, it's not alleged. There's no doubt in my mind that it transpired with the, with one of the citizens in town, absolutely not.
I don't even believe that it was denied.
Excuse me. Please, if, 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 if you're going to just shout out comments, I will ask you, this is a meeting, it's a public meeting, there is a way for this meeting to operate, that's not it, all right? All right. Yes, Allison. There we go.
I would suggest that we could agree that denigrating the public, speaking fencelessly or basically, is inappropriate for a board. If this happened, then I personally would apologize. It is not the way a board should behave, and we now have our meeting being recorded, and.
Which is one of your concerns.
We will have wedge by a sentence when this happens, and we just say that we, we agree this is not appropriate, someone's may be alleged, someone may or may not happen, but be grateful, it shouldn't happen, we will.
All right, any more?
Oh, yeah, Mike. I understand, I.
Yeah.
However, Jeff Cooter, the things he said about my family, he has not apologized for it, so I don't know how do we know if he doesn't feel remorse, that he's not to go ahead and do this to somebody else in our community.
All right.
That's my thing.
Any other comments specific to this? Yes.
Julie Johnson, I'm just wondering if he said she said, and obviously there are some percolating, but is this grounds for, I guess dismissal or not reappointing someone?
Well, it's not dismissal, let's be clear. This is, this is about, uh, uh, basically a reappointment. Board has authority on appointments.
But is this the reason that you stop someone in the community from serving?
Oh, I, I, I think, I think personal temperament is an important factor to wedding for anybody who's serving on.
So this one personal infraction is enough for you to say you no longer want your volunteer services?
I, I think it's a really dangerous precedent to set, to have a complaint from over a year ago pop up and interfere with someone's reappointment who has served, who volunteered for seven years, given hundreds of hours of their time to something they're passionate about. Um, I think we can aspire to, to do things differently going forward and, and not have these sort of things happen, um, but that precedent is really dangerous because, you know, I could say I heard something from Zoning Board over here.
No, it's a point we'll take, Chris. I get it, I get it, but look, I, I, I think there should be some acknowledgement here that, that what has happened is, there is an issue. How we address it is the open question, but your, your point is very well taken. Other comments?
I guess, Dale Davis, I think respect gets respect, and it starts with the board because you are our elected officials. If that is not the place where it starts, then everything else falls apart. Michael, you're the chair of the board, and you lead the aura of that board. Michael, you're the chair of the board, and you lead the aura of that board. If you sit there, excuse me, with a sour face and you don't make eye contact with people, that is the precedent that is set. Okay? You can snicker, I saw it. This is not right. That is not the way we conduct ourselves. And that attitude has transpired into our community. We are a divided community because of what happens on the board. We already voted on this Warren article. We already supported the rug property. What are we doing? We're wasting time and taxpayer dollars to prove what? You went out to the rug, you went out to the Vernon Family Farm, and now it's the rugs. What's next? Can't we please get along? If we can't, let's get a mediator in here. Because we are a small town with a lot of very smart people. You all are sitting up there, week after week, month after month, as board members. You're spending countless hours of your personal time. Don't make it countless. Make it count for something in our community. Thank you.
I'd like to thank both of you in light. We've given the New Fields Conservation Committee two plus years to come to understand our issues out there in the Midwest. Unfortunately, they never really fully supported us and didn't fully give it that effort and get to understand the full situation before we were talking to them. When I addressed this to the select board members, they immediately set up a mediation with Southeastland House in my house in the past to help come up with resolution to the issues. Something that the New Fields Conservation Committee should have done. Instead, they got upset with the select board members for supporting members of their community and accused them of doing wrong.
I have a comment.
They were supporting, but it all goes to transparency, right?
I have a comment if I can.
Yeah, I was about to say. I really appreciate all your efforts to the Vernon Family Farm.
Let me keep the conversation to issue at hand. I'd like to see if we can put a period on this conversation. I promised myself I wasn't going to ever attack the men. I would approach the methods. Okay? And it goes across the board. The idea is, anyone that is appointed, their methods should be questioned. Okay? And so what they say or making attacks, that should be sidelined. Okay? The methods. I don't like that you're doing X, Y, Z. Okay? Not that, you know, he made a snarky comment or something like that. I mean, really, the methods is really what you have to... And you brought it up also. Not to point that you... But you said, "Let's keep it about business. Let's not make it personal." And I think that's a valid point. But it has to be across the board. You can't be chief, you can't be judge and jury and say, "Well, he did this," when that series of behavior happens all the time. So I think we should move toward a more civil discourse. Not yelling at each other. Don't point fingers and blame. But you can attack the methods. I don't like the way you're doing this. I don't like your policies or procedures. Okay? So I think that should be the last comment about this. I think it would be great to have him back. It's very hard to find somebody that's a volunteer for this many years. I mean, really, and you guys put your guts into it. Whether some people appreciate it or not, you're putting your guts into it, right? So is he. He's doing the same thing. So, really, come on. Let's stop the nonsense, okay? Whether you vote him in or not, or reappoint him, that's fine. But let's not start attacking each other. Okay? Again, I think the issues that were raised were issues worthy of discussion. I think the information you provided today, I think clarifies a lot of that. I think everyone's been clear about the points. Is there any other comments relative to this issue before we move on? Forrest?
Yeah, I guess I'd just like to ask how the board suggested you move forward. The last meeting and this meeting, both extremely uncomfortable, stress-filled, a demount stress that's taking the board through what happened in the last meeting in preparation of this meeting, and the years-long conversations that have gone on about any of these topics. It's hard to understand why we can't get on the second page. And it's extremely difficult as a volunteer in this town to want to put myself through this type of interaction. My request is that going forward, we find a way to interact with each other in a way that's not so aggressive. And I think that goes both ways. But, you know, all volunteers in this town look toward their time and efforts. And we're not paid. You know, we take the time because we're passionate about New Fields. But I understand why it's hard to find volunteers when situations and interactions, like the ones happening here and in the previous meeting, go on. It's incredibly difficult. And I don't support it going forward. And I'd like to find a way to mediate that. So that's my final comment. Thanks.
I appreciate that, Forrest. Let me just say, I think you're preaching to the choir. I probably had had more nasty comments written about me on webpages in this town than anybody over fifty years. Okay? I get it. Finding volunteers for these positions is not easy. Especially when you go online and you read what gets written. A lot of it is just outright lies. Look, I don't like it, but it's also our job to address issues that come up. We got a complaint from a citizen. We have two choices. We ignore it, which I think is current as precedent, or we address it. Last meeting, we addressed it. And, you know, the way we get into a forum where everybody in the public weighs in is going to be the kind of environment that I think you're concerned about. And I get it. Nobody likes to, you know, most people don't like the conflict. They want everything to be easy. Life isn't easy. It, you know, we need to try to make it as productive as possible, but there's always going to be differences of opinions. And sometimes people take those differences of opinion personally. I think in this environment, you got to avoid doing that. You got to stick to the business. You got to not take things personally. You have to not lash out at people. Focus on the issues at hand. And again, I appreciate your comments, and I thank you for that. All right. Anything else on the Conservation Commission? Yeah?
One other comment is, problems don't get better with age.
You're my fine line.
My only concern would be, you know, if issues occur to you guys with just behavior, why not deal with it right then? Instead of six months or a year down the road where it comes up, it would seem to me, working together, there's issues of concern, behavior issues, contact issues, a citizen not being treated fairly in your line. Why not meet with him then and express action? Or if he is dealt with, he was a board in a certain manner that's not appropriate, why not sit down with him and deal with it then? Instead of waiting to a time to reappoint him and then say, "We don't want to reappoint you because of what you did a year ago or four months ago." This doesn't seem to me to be the right way to do this.
Well, I'll take responsibility for that. But I think timing of that is part of it, right? The complaint came up as his reappointment was coming up. And so we're going to address it. Now, in all honesty, I defer to doing almost all our business in public. Anybody who, you know, I don't even like doing conversations over email, you know, between board members. It's not really allowed. You're going to provide information, you're going to send a document, that's one thing. But you can't have a back and forth out of the public eye. You're required under state statute to do all this stuff in public. And it's a point well taken. Certainly something to consider when it comes to more personal matters. But, you know, I'll take responsibility for that. But again, I understand, I think it was a deferral to, this is town business. It should be done in public now. Chris?
Piggybacking on Mike Matthews' comment, I have a real issue with the way Michael Kessler's complaints came up. For a whole year, he sat at the table with us and didn't voice a single one of those things. And then to bring it up in the manner he did at the last meeting, you know, a full year after some of the oldest complaints were jotted down in his notebook, I don't think that's how select board rep oversight should work on town boards. If there's an issue, it needs to be brought promptly. So we can deal with it. We could have changed... If he had issues with how we were operating, we could have reported it to you or to us, and we could have changed it then.
But again, at the last meeting, he's no longer on the board. And I get what you're saying. And I would say, have that conversation...
But you're saying that means that you thought he provided good oversight and you were confident that Mark would as well. I don't think that happened.
But again, to that extent, it's the agency problem, right? You're relying on somebody to basically provide that oversight.
One of the things I've added to this is if there is something that upsets or is inappropriate or is deemed to be inappropriate by any one member on the board, there is a responsibility of the other members of the board to address it immediately and put it into it and say, "No, we need to revisit that and think about what was just said. It was inappropriate and it's unacceptable." We will have to do that going forward.
Right. Hands everywhere. Yeah.
I just had one other observation. It's lost any of this conversation. A lot of these issues physical, the lights, the conservation function, and some of these other issues outside of rug property were new to me over the last couple of meetings. I think Mr. Senury mentioned that, you know, if somebody comes to you with a complaint, there's an opportunity to set that off to the side or to address it. And I would suggest that that's not a binary decision. It seems as though allegations were made at this last meeting, which were not fully researched or thought through, and were based on inaccurate facts. And so I would suggest the third option is to be thoughtful in how we address it and fully vet something before you make accusations in public, given the nature of the positions. And I would ask that you consider to do that going forward. Thank you.
So I just want, I'm sorry. No, no, no. I just want to make it clear, like, we just addressed this as a select board member about a month ago. This was not something we had discussed with them prior. We heard about it through two people in our community. And my husband and I made the choice to take the high road and just sit it out. But as months went on, we had more issues, we were hearing more things on how the Girards are difficult to deal with in regards to state and beavers. And we felt the need to clear our name because we felt those comments that were stated in that meeting were completely unjustified. We've been trying to work with Southeastland Trust for several years. And to be accused of having a lot of money and throwing it out, an easement to try to change it, is completely inaccurate. We were willing to put two acres of conservation land that's amongst of the scat to greenland into conservation in return for respect for Southeastland Trust to give us 24 hours. And then the New Fields Conservation Committee did not support us in that. In the same minutes, I reread the minutes, they supported the Vernon Family Farm. I know you don't want to go into this, Mike, but I just want to state this.
We're not going to go into this.
We didn't allow Forrest to talk about this.
We're not going to go into this.
But what I'm trying to say is, I did not bring this to their attention until a month ago. And to be honest with you, and I'm completely honest, I had no idea Jeff Pucher was going to be reappointed. That the timing was not intentional by any means.
Thank you. Yeah?
I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around... It just seems a little shitified that one comment, not like individual one after one or someone or something to the town...
It was more instinctive or...
I guess if you're at work and you say something about somebody, is your boss going to fire you again? Or is it going to be a discussion?
It's up to your boss. Well, I guess... And I don't want to bring it up again, but I'm going to. There have been other board members that have made derogatory comments about people that are appealing the town, asking for their assistance, their help. And when you call them farm boy, that stuff doesn't fly.
Let's make sure you're not talking about the select board here.
No, no. I'm just going to say this. Whether you've been present or not, you've been privy to the minutes, the meetings, all of that. So you can't have it both ways. That's all I'm getting at. Yeah, so I'm, again, attacking your methods. You can't have it both ways. Get rid of those people that are making those comments. They're harassing taxpayers. And again, if somebody wants to make a complaint to this board, this board will address it. So, I mean, you can't have it both ways. That's it. But again, if anybody wants to make a complaint to this board, I think this board has actually gone out of its way to address pretty much every complaint that has come before, whether it's, you know, things about lights, traffic, signage, individuals, personnel, we address it. So if somebody has an issue, they think this board needs to address it, we do that work, as much as it's, you know, a pain to do. To deal with issues between individual citizens sometimes or between officials, we do address it. So I don't think anybody's not having it both ways. If somebody wants to file a complaint, great. We'll take it upon ourselves to deal with it in one way, shape, or form. I'm sure a complaint could be filed, but my thought is not to chastise that other person. Tell them to stop. Let's discontinue that kind of activity. But you have to also give, you have to also look at the board in your own eye before you're picking the splinter out of someone else's. That's the idea. You have to be careful of that because that's exactly what's happening here. Anything else on conservation? Yeah? Dylan?
I am completely in agreement with all the folks who've been saying, "Let's all make a commitment going forward to try to be more civil, more polite." And I go into a whole lot of select board meetings. We know that one select board person resigned because they felt like they were not being treated well on this select board. I know there was a delivery decision where I was advocating for something, and people came up to me afterwards and said, "I'm sorry, Michael bullied me." And this is something where, kind of what Dale said, but let's just make the... Easy, we've talked about it.
Kind of civil.
Let's do stuff if we need to have some kind of mediator or someone to do a group processing to have everybody going forward to work together, to work together civilly and better. That seems like a marvelous thing. But to single out Jeff and complicatedness that he's made seems...
Success.
Kind of unfair and... And both of us need to just single impact. And this is something that's been going on unfortunately for a while.
Thank you. All right. We're going to move on. No, I think we've beaten this one to death. All right. Anything else on the Conservation Commission for tonight?
We can...
Yeah, it's on the agenda for later on in the agenda. So we'll get to it if we work through it. One other item, I guess with respect to the Conservation Commission and the activity, I want to thank Allison and David Mason came out. We had representatives from the New Market Conservation Commission come out. We had several of the landowners, this is dealing with the beavers and rail trails. We had fishing game and rails and traps come down to evaluate two areas on the rail trail for the beaver dam problem that we're facing flooding on the trail. One between the junction in Old Lee and the larger, I would say, more complex issue, probably a good way to put it, between Route 87 and Hallsmore Road. I think it's good. The landowners were great. I think we had some very good discussions. It looks like some solutions will possibly be implemented. I think the hard one is that Halls Mill, between Halls Mill and 87 is very in-depth. And Allison did some additional work after that identifying the lodge of Beaver Dam on the north side.
Beaver Dam, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, given the flooding that's occurring on the rail trail, we can't be surprised with that. So, but again, I want to thank everybody who participated. Hobie was there.
Thanks, I hope you could.
Setting it up. Exactly. Yeah, but again, I think it was great going out there and walking in. And hopefully, we'll be able to start addressing that. So thank you, Conservation Commission, for that. Yeah, go ahead.
I had a long talk with Craig already after the fact. Conservation folks got the email. The butters got the email. And all the folks from the state got it. What's going to happen is intended plan within a month is they're going to clean up the culverts that are blocked where the beavers block the discharge in. Then they're going to pull down the lodge. It's the land lodge against the rail trail. And then they're going to breach the dam against the water over there. If the fish cops, fishing game come in to look at it. But they plan on doing that, starting that hopefully within a month. And one of the other points was they want to get the beaver, deceiver, and stowers out there to give them a personal assessment of what it's going to take as far as scope of project. Let's pause this.
All right, anything else with conservation?
Can I ask a question about the, are they going to trap the beavers? Because I saw how they were sort of standing away and within a short period of time. Right back.
It was back within the next 24 hours. Some beavers have moved down to beaver, where beavers go. There are some trappers that have been terminated because basically it's impacting their land. So there's trapping transpired at this point.
It's going to be, as I said, the beaver, deceiver between the junction and Old Lee likely is going to, I think that one is a good chance of resolving that. We'll know when we know. The, between Halls Mill and 87, the extent of that and the number of beaver dams and where they're located, that's going to be a lot more complex. Some of the, like the lodge by the trail will probably have to come down. The outward, you know, who knows what they're going to do with the beaver dams further upstream that Allison identified. But that is, that's probably going to be a work in progress for some time.
There's approximately 20 to 25 beavers up there by the first bell bar.
All right, moving on. Before we get to the Vernon Farm, items two, three, and four are probably the minimums altogether here on the agenda. This is an email from Mr. McGowan, the letter from TPL, and questions about the land property purchase, which I think they all hone in on the same issue. So Mark, you requested this go on. Do you want to start?
Thank you. I have Lynette Bat on speaker here because she's two and a half hours away. So I just wanted to accommodate her. She's with the Trust for Public Land. Lynette, can you hear me?
I can sort of hear you.
Okay.
It might be better off your speaker, Mark, because I'm getting about half of what's in there.
Okay, so you can comment as we're going along, okay?
Okay.
I'm just going to read a quick statement and then you can chime in as you see, okay? So if I may, if you'll indulge me for one minute. In the spirit of transparency, after speaking with Lynette Bat at the Trust for Public Land, we wanted to address a few concerns that I've been made aware of. One is the RFQ that was issued for the rope acquisition and the consulting services and the trust for public land role in the process. Last week, town released an RFQ while the select board previously discussed it. I didn't see it personally. And I mindlessly, listening to the minutes or the streaming, said, did you see this? And I never saw any document on that. But that's besides.
Hold on, hold on, Mark. I'm sorry. I'm going to have to address that directly. Actually, go back to the April 9 minutes, the minute stipulating. Michael provided the other members with a drafted request for a quote.
I saw it. I saw it.
I'm sorry. I handed hard copies to you and to Hobie and discussed the fact that you should look at this and that take it home to review. And we will discuss it at the next meeting.
And I do have my hard copy here.
I handed you both hard copies about it. And I made the point that if you have changes or edits, we'll address it at the next meeting.
So anyway, additionally, we received the letter from the TPL expressing their concerns about the RFQ scope and potential overlap of roles, particularly due diligence.
Is that the three-way letter you're referring to?
Yeah, and I'll supply you the, I have one. So the TPL's offering concerns, the trust as an independent third-party conservation organization offers to provide, they have offered to provide these due diligence services to the town at no cost. This aligns with the Spirit of a Warrant article, which calls for facilitation by a conservation organization and due diligence provided by them. On the RFQ, it is talking about a developer, having a developer that.
That's not correct.
That is correct. I'll show you the RFQ.
It is for people with experience in land transactions, like engineers, surveyors. That is who it is for.
Well, that's not what it says.
The language says the successful vendor or vendors must have experience in real estate development or project engineering or other similar services to a third party.
No conservation, nothing with conservation. This is a land acquisition. It's a conservation land acquisition. It is not. This is a purchase and sale. No, first of all, let me finish the statement, please, okay? Before you cut in. And then you could cut the floor. Okay? Please. All right. Concerns with the current RFQ. However, the issue RFQ deviates from the board's discussion and Article 1 in several ways. The scope, the RFQ proposes the town contract all due diligence exceeding the previously discussed scope. This approach is expensive. It exceeds our budget, which we never talked about in the budget, and presents challenges in meeting deadlines and requirements. The budget, there's a lack of clarity on the cost and funding source for this expanded scope. As fiduciaries, meaning us, we must consider TPL's group service offer. And then the qualifications, as I just mentioned. Qualifications are insufficient. They don't emphasize land conservation expertise, knowledge of relevant grant and loan programs, fundraising experience, or familiarity with state, federal due diligence. Therefore, I, number one, I want to propose that we table that RFQ, sign a memorandum of understanding or purchase agreement with the TPL, which is part of what needs to happen. How can you contract a third party to buy something that you never signed an agreement on? How can you do that? That's like saying, I want to buy a house and I'm going to hire someone and pay them all this due diligence when you never signed a contract with the buyer, excuse me, with the seller. You never signed anything. So you, we are going to ask you, we're going to motion to basically sign off on that agreement, that memorandum of understanding, purchase agreement with TPL. And to explain that in layman's terms. What happens is the TPL basically takes ownership of the property and then grants it to the town. But they need an agreement from all three of us. They need to sign that. So I'm asking them tonight to agree to sign this. Are you going to agree to sign this?
I haven't seen anything, Mark, in terms of the terms and conditions of this.
You have.
No, we have not.
We have not.
Absolutely not. That was an issue prior to the vote.
We have verbally provided information about what this looks like. I haven't seen a purchase and sale. I haven't seen the auction agreement. We have seen none of this. And not only that, but this is my point, Mark. You're asking me to sign something without actually having this, running it by legal counsel? Of course not. Of course not.
No, we want you to agree to be in cooperation with the Trust for Public Lands. That's all.
May I now, Mark? So as a condition of the loan agreements, and Lynette knows this because she was on the call with the Department of Environmental Services talking about the clean water loan and the fact that we are required under that loan agreement if we're going to have somebody engaged by the town to go out and competitively bid it and solicit, not just hand over that responsibility to an individual party. We're required to solicit under the loan agreement. In addition.
That's not correct.
Yep. Lynette, you were on the conversation that I was on with DES and you asked the question of, well, can the town just assign this? And they said, no, you need to go out and competitively bid it.
No, that's not correct.
We can agree to disagree here. And I'm more than happy to contact DES tomorrow. But they said that since this is a state loan that we're requiring. More importantly, town policy, anything over $5,000, you have to competitively bid. To be perfectly honest, this is going to be the single largest expenditure of this town by far. Okay? I don't think that by any stretch of the imagination we should not be soliciting professional advice to make sure the tea's across and the eyes are dotted here. There are a lot of issues that need to be addressed. That request for qualification is basically soliciting professionals. The trust for public land can submit under the RFQ and it will be under consideration just like any other organization. But I think. Go ahead, Lynette.
We need to, yeah, we need to remain an independent third-party facilitator. The only way for us to do that, we have not been contracted. We're not a consultant to the landlord. We don't represent him in the transaction. Similarly, we can't be contracted by the town to increase the due diligence to remain independent in our facilitation role between the buyer and seller, the town and the landowner. So the way these transactions and conservation projects could work is there's a conservation organization, accredited conservation organization with experience in these types of transactions that completes the due diligence on behalf of the town, provides in the funding entities, so the state and federal grant programs. There's a lot of requirements that go into making sure that due diligence is done correctly and to state and federal standards that we have experience with through working with these specific, you know, funding entities and programs. The state, my memory of the call with the state and some emails with the state loan program is that they acknowledged that this was an unusual type of project. They've literally never historyed a loan program before done a land acquisition. And they specifically said that it could be directed to trust for public land to manage those contracts for due diligence. It could be sole source. And that's an option that the town has. Alternatively, if the town wanted to use the $100,000 of planning funds, which is not a requirement for the town to use those funds, then the town, if they did not want to work with Trust for Public Land, could competitively contract it. So those are two different options. But that's, again, only if the town wants to pay for those costs. We have offered to the town, Michael, you mentioned, you know, a contract that the town makes of over $5,000 to be competitively bid. What we're saying is we have been working on this project for over a year now in cooperation with the town. We've laid out the plan of the loan that has been, here's the structure of the transaction that's been proposed. We've entered into an agreement with the landlord. We have completed the initial due diligence that has been reviewed and submitted to the town. And the town has submitted it with grant applications. So we've already done the initial round of review to the town as we lie on to submit grant applications and the pre-application. And per Article 1 and the wording in it, that it be facilitated by conservation organizations who will provide copies of due diligence to the town. We have continued in trying to work under that article to facilitate the project and to move forward with the final due diligence, which is the plan that we have laid out to the town for the last year. We also sent, I sent a letter to the select board, I'm sure you will remember, for March 25, but I have not received a response from the town in that. In that memo, I proposed as action item memo one, next step to be taken for the town to enter into an agreement with Trust for Public Land to govern the overall transaction, to clarify rules and to clarify this due diligence process. So we hold a contract with the landlord. The landlord has said they want to work with Trust for Public Land to facilitate this independent third-party conservation organization that's accredited. And especially, we can move forward under that structure and have requested, given under an agreement with the town, for the town to enter the process to receive and review the due diligence and to receive the land at that level. So just to be really clear, our request is not for you to sign anything, but to respond to the March 25 request for you to enter into a purchase and sale or memorandum of understanding with TPL. So I need to hear that the town would like to enter into that agreement with TPL in order for us to move forward on the project. The RFQ was getting really ahead of that and contracting out due diligence, which would be a repeat contract of due diligence and would really complicate the funding situation with grant and loan programs. They wouldn't know which set of due diligence to review. So I'm saying we just all need to get on the same page with rules. We need to enter into an agreement that can govern this transaction appropriately and spell that, how that due diligence is going to work. If you are planning to work with Trust for Public Land in this transaction, but the landlord has said that's what we want to see happen and that's why we're doing it in the warrant article.
Lynette, the first time I received this document, the 25 March 24 email, was when Mark handed it out on 23 April 24. I have not seen.
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
He said he never received that email.
I did not get this email until you handed out, Mark, on the 23rd. And you say you never saw a response. As I read through the email, the first two pages are from you and then the next pages are a recap again of the New Fields Exeter between the Forest Project. I see nothing in the first two pages asking for a response. It's basically a summation of what has transpired. The vote, they went through, they're very happy, the New Fields Next Step timelines, Exeter's Next Step timelines, and Exeter's Next Step purchase and sale timelines, and then a funding update. And there was no request that I see within this document of a response from the board in total. So if it came to me, I never saw it. And again, I did not see it until Mark handed it out on the 23rd.
I'm having a little bit of a hard time here. I apologize. Maybe the speaker can move towards the middle. But I'm looking at my email now. I sent the email on 3/25. I followed up and I sent the same memo on the floor. Attachment memo on it. And I asked Mark to provide it at the last board meeting in hard copy.
And that's the first time I saw it was at the select board when he handed it out.
Well, you sent my email and other people confirmed that it was.
I'm looking at it.
And they got me another.
Yeah, this one. You're talking about the one that I gave you.
I'm talking about the one on 3/25.
Yeah, but if the point is there's no response, I read this email. I see nothing of a cause for action.
You just said it wasn't sent to you, which.
If you listen to what I just said, I'll try again, Jeff. I said, I read this. I saw it. I'm reading it now. There's no cause for action on the part of the board from this email. This is from recap.
So instead of going down that rabbit hole, that's what we're doing right now.
Well, we are going down the rabbit hole because things are being said that are inaccurate.
Okay, so let's not attack the men.
We're not attacking the men. I'm breaking a loophole, making sure it's accurate.
Let's move forward on getting an instant consensus on whether you'd like to cooperate with this program or not. Because I don't want to waste my time with this. And nobody wants to waste the town's money. Now, if you're going to contract $50,000, $60,000, $70,000. Now, if you're going to contract $50,000, $60,000, $70,000 for an outside agency, and then it's dropped, people are going to freak. I'm just saying. That's not, I don't think that's going to go well. I mean, maybe I'm naive here, but...
Yeah, Mike, I guess that, Michael, just to correct me, it seems like you were the one that wrote the RFQ, as the other four members...
I drafted an RFQ.
And the intent of the RFQ was that to secure a professional services firm to evaluate the work that's being done.
No, so there are a lot of things that have to get done under this, right? Required survey work, entitled work, and environmental. And it is to get professional assistance for the town as an agent of the town. Because the town is the one who's ending up buying this property, right? The town is providing all the money here. At the end of the day, it is town money. The town is the recipient of the grants. The town is the recipient of the loans. The town is basically making the payments. So, the town needs to make sure that its tea's crossed and it's eyes are dotted. And the idea is to basically solicit professional assistance because of the nature and scope of this, and it's a lot of money.
Okay, I get all of that. My point is, are you saying you want the RFQ to go to individuals that will actually perform the type of service?
No, those are going to have to be contracted. Those are going to have to be contracted. Whether the consultant can provide that or not, again, we'll get solicitations. The idea is, we're not going to take solicitations from a developer. That's not the point here, and that is a red flag. These are groups like SE Group, or Altis, or Beal. These are companies that consult on land tracking transactions all the time. They know the process. At the end of the day, this is a land purchase. And we have to do a bunch of stuff to make sure that we know what we're getting. Buyer and seller are comfortable, and this gets done the proper way.
So, again, just to clarify, so you're not looking for this from the formal, just assessment?
They may, so sometimes engineering firm may do survey work, and they can basically provide that service directly. Maybe not, right? It might be more of a straight-up consulting firm that will oversee that, help us select, you know, a good survey company, a good title company, what environmental company to do this.
Yeah, I just want to add a question because, probably to your point about, and your point, Michael, about the town was on the hook for all this. The total purchase price is $3.7 million, of which $1.2 million is going to be raised by TPL with their law. Then, the loan represents the other 2.5 or 2.6, I don't know.
Well, the 1.2 is, wait, wait, wait. The 1.2 is grants that we've applied for. That the town has applied...
Right, the TPO is doing on behalf of the town.
They're assisting the town in making those grant submissions. But trust me, the town has a serious role in that. And at the end of the day, the town is responsible for complying with the terms and conditions of the grants, right? The town is the applicant. The town will be the recipient. The town will have to apply it properly under the terms and conditions of the grants.
Which TPO is doing on behalf of the town?
And just to clarify, that's for some of the grants, but not all. We are submitting some of the grants as Trust for Public Land would be the recipient and convey that funding to the town.
Right. Yeah, Sean?
Hey, Sean, yeah. I had heard a lot of emails. One point I just wanted to make, I've shared this with you before. I'm the treasurer for a nonprofit organization in Maine, Old Indian Woods and Trails. We oversee two community forests, one in Bethel, Maine, and one in a community called Runkford, Maine, a little different kind of community than Bethel. In both cases, we work with the TPL. In both cases, we work with the community. And we raised funds and went through the process. And it's definitely a challenging item for any town. There's a lot to go through, a lot to think through. And the TPL really was fantastic in both of these main communities in helping bring us through that process. And there's a lot of the terms that the new people, for example, keep talking about appraisal. One of the things, and, 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 Hoby, respectfully, I know you brought this up a number of times, about the purchase price, you've been rightfully worried about that. And that was in the letters, the percentage, the town numbers, et cetera. There is a process to raise federal dollars called the Yellow Book Survey or the Yellow Book Assessment. And they call it the Yellow Book because it's about this stick. And if you want to be eligible for any of these grants, you have to meet that criteria. So, very few appraisers are able to actually do it because they have to be certified to do the Yellow Book process. So, if, and we should challenge everything, but if we follow the process that TPL takes us through, there's going to be a purchase price that will be acceptable to a seller. We're going to then say, "Can we pay the seller that purchase price?" We don't actually know the answer to that yet. The answer is in the Yellow Book. So, an assessment will be done by a certified appraisal, meeting the federal standard. It will determine whether or not we're paying fair market value. And I think, you know, there's a lot of facts, and I don't expect anybody to be a land expert. But when you step back from this project and you think about what really matters, it's like, are we paying the appropriate price for a piece of land that the town wants to conserve? If we are, how do we know? We're going to go through this process. And if we go through additional processes and we want to spend a little bit more money, and we all have transparency that says, "Look, we're going to do two appraisals because we want to make sure none of those are within the federal standard, but we need some other standard," we should do that. But just know, if we do nothing, we're not going to be able to blow through with an appraisal that's not complete. And I'm in no way saying that the select board is suggesting that.
Yeah.
I just want to bring clarity to that item then. As a taxpayer of the town, for me, I think it's a duplication of effort. But I uniquely have the experience being a former member who's conserved thousands of acres and worked directly with the TPL. I don't expect everybody else to have the same level of confidence I do in that. But I just want to express that confidence as a local community member.
I appreciate the letter, and I think, again, I think what we're trying to be is as open and transparent, but as you pointed out, this is not a, this is not a simple process.
Not a simple process.
Not by any structure. And especially, as we know, there's certainly going to be issues on the survey or entitled because we're talking about properties that have been in the vein for, you know, hundreds of years. It is a process, and I think what, at least my concern is, I want to make sure that we're getting some good professional advice, third-party independent advice, to make sure that when we are doing things, like getting the environmental phase one, we're reading this correctly, right? We're understanding what it's saying, what the concerns are, how do we address them, et cetera. So, thank you very much.
I agree. I still, final comment on that. I agree with what you said in this direction. The only ask I would have as a citizen is that if the board has not embraced the relationship, it sounds like there's some emails in there, you've not gotten there, or things. There's an opportunity for you to come together as a board, work closely with TPL, and maybe put up some kind of public site that helps all of us understand, "Hey, what's the next step?" You know, just bring that transparency. Just ask the room to gather. Someone supports, someone's against it. We'll be all within the town.
Let me make a comment on that. Sure.
The town voted for the process. They voted to conserve. That's the will of the town. That's who we will pursue as a board. And there's been all kinds of constituations. We've heard all kinds of slanderous statements about, "Oh, the select board's trying to screw the deal up." That is absolutely false. The most sacred thing in this country is the right to vote. There is nothing more sacred. And everybody here voted and supported it, and those who didn't. One side won, one side lost. The side that won, we're going to do it. We're going to do the deal. You'll find, oh, he'll drag you for me. But I will not spend a penny of the town's money until I'm sure all the tea's are crossed and all the eyes are dotted. I have a responsibility, everybody sitting here, including my own law, come tax time, to make sure that we don't drop balls somewhere. And that's what my mindset is as we look forward on this. And if it takes another set of eyeballs on it, hey, TPL can be the smartest big mom on the lot. People miss stuff. You get another set of eyeballs on things, and then it concludes a problem that will come back and bite us in the backside in the future.
I'm Fred Ross, president here. I'm very much in favor of active steward property. I'd like to just provide as briefly as I can, two comments. One relates to the March 25th letter, and the other relates to the RFQ. On the March 25th letter, Hoby, I'm going to build a little bit on comments you made a minute ago, and offer that I think we have a disconnect that we should all resolve to address. You've mentioned that you've read carefully through the letter, and there's no explicit request for action on the part of the board or the town. And I would tend to agree with you in terms of explicit language. But what I would have expected is one of those in the ranks of the 67% or so in the town who voted, was that the language of this letter would cry out implicitly, powerfully, for an engaged and cooperative response. I'll just, I will mention just a little bit here. On the first page, you often write, "Second, I will follow up with each town separately, but for the benefit of coordination, we are hoping to proceed with the following as next steps, project timeline in each town. Newfields is the next block, and the first bullet is purchase and sale agreement between TPL and the town, April or May." Were I in your shoes and certainly looking from the outside, to me, at a bare minimum, it would have seemed that there would be a response saying, "Thank you much for the letter. Great information. Generally agree or disagree, I have the following concerns of what you lay out here." Because there's a clear timeline that we've all been versed in, briefed on, and was persuasive to, again, 67% of the voters. So, you and the rest of the members of the board may have time constraints. You may have a different view of this. But that would have been what I, as an individual voter, would have expected.
Sure.
So, if it did show up or email, if you saw my name on that email, I never saw this. Okay, until the 23rd. I agreed that versus the sale agreement between TPL and the town for April or May, we've been asking for, as a board, we've asked for a purchase and sale agreement from before, from probably December or January, and we've never seen any. So, I look at the schedule as, "All right, so this is where they're going to work, and they're the coordinators, as I understand, TPL is a coordinator here. So, it's her responsibility to come up with the purchase and sale agreement. This is dated 25 March, and they say April, May, so we're just in what, today's what, the 7th of May. So, I understand the point taken, but I kind of know, okay, I'm not the driver here. You know, you understand what I'm saying?
Sure.
Okay, but your points are all taken. I don't disagree with you on the...
So, Lynette and I will make sure that you're both going to get a document within the next, what would we say, Lynette? Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
We'll make sure that the select board receives a document, an agreement, correct?
So, yeah, Mark, I want to be clear. So, there's, the RFQ that was issued is suggesting the town is replacing TPL's role with a private consultant to do the due diligence. That's the way the RFQ is written. Our understanding all along has been, because we are facilitating the project and we hold the purchase contract with the landowner, we are contracting the due diligence. We've already spent a large amount of money contracting the initial set of due diligence and a huge amount of staff time and resources in helping the town with fundraising and doing that due diligence. We've started putting into motion contracting the final due diligence. This is how we typically work on these projects, as a very experienced third-party independent facilitator of the project. This is how we worked with the town on the Piscata Greenway project in 2006. The town did not contract their own due diligence on that transaction. Trust for Public Land and Southeast Land Trust, at the time Rocky Mountain Land Trust, were the ones to contract that due diligence and provide it to the town, the funding agencies. We are that third-party independent facilitator. So, our ask is that, because we've spent a lot of resources, that has been our understanding with the town. And I think the biggest thing is, that is what's directed in article 1, is it says, "Facilitated by conservation organizations that will provide copies of..." And it lists out the four aspects of due diligence to the select board. So, my question is, why is the select board going against article 1 by contracting out that role to a private consultant rather than working with Trust for Public Land, as is our understanding all along? So, what we really need to hear from the town is that the town wants to, you know, work with us in this process, as we've laid out for a little bit over a year now, and is holding on the RFQ and wants to enter into that agreement with us, at which point we'll put the agreement together. But I'm waiting, you know, for the town to respond to, this is the outline of the process. I followed up a couple of times, my email, I placed, you know, a couple of phone calls. So, we're really waiting to hear that the town is wanting to move forward with this process in this format in order to put the agreement and document together. Of course, that will be done, you know, in partnership with the town to make sure it's something that works. Absolutely, I hear the town that they, you know, they need to make sure the tea's are crossed, eyes are dotted, and that's what we do in every single transaction. We have over 50 years of experience completing conservation real estate transactions. And as I put in my letter in the Hampshire, we've been working for over 25 years to complete more than 30 projects across the state. We've worked with about a dozen or more other communities on projects of jobs like this, where this has been the process and structure that's been followed. And some examples are, you know, we've worked with the town of Panavert, City of Panavert. We've worked with Bartlett and Jackson. We've worked with Meredith, Mylan, Randolph. And we welcome the town to reach out to any of those municipalities that we've done similar projects with to acquire about our work and partnerships and the independence of the role and the quality of the facilitation of the role. And again, we're offering to complete that due diligence at no cost to the town. Obviously, all of that due diligence is deemed done on behalf of the town. It's reviewed by the town, but it also has to be received and approved by the funding partners.
We have a question.
Actually, if I may, I have a second one. And that's the RFQ. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
If Fred wants to continue the second part of it.
Just go ahead.
On the RFQ, and this is going to follow a similar theme, it's going to pick up elements of what Lynette was just sharing. I'm no stranger, and I fully support and understand, if I can share a duty. And if I was a member of the board near Newfields, and I don't have the knowledge that you gentlemen have with all the details, but I would expect that, I would think, that I would need more than the town's available organic resources to support this effort. I personally, zero issue with any of that. That's how I would live it, and I agree. What concerns me when I read the RFQ is both what's in there and what is not in there. What is in there gives me, standing outside the board, standing outside of Trust for Public Land and the Conservation Commission, it gives me a sense that the board is focused on replicating or substituting for activities that those of us in the voting ranks have known that TPL has volunteered to undertake and been undertaking for more than a year. And I don't see any reference to that or acknowledgement of that. And I also don't see, as Artie had pointed out, I also don't see references to types of expertise that I would expect to see reflected in the RFQ if in fact the role, however, ultimately provides these services is to assist the gentleman of the board in assessing and ensuring that they are fully comfortable with what TPL, with 50-plus years of experience, including here in the Hampshire, actually provides and does at their expense. And so, let me just wrap up by saying, I... And so let me just wrap up by saying, I am looking to understand what I'm receiving here in a way that hopefully either now or later takes me into a place where I say, I voted for this, so did many others, and the board has embraced the relationship with TPL and is going to ensure that in the process, the town's interests are protected. But it's going to be in close partnership with TPL. If we're going any other kind of direction, then I have a serious concern about that. And my first or next question would be, please tell us why. Give us a basis, because there may be things about the process that I don't know about TPL that I'm unaware of, so I would look for that answer. But otherwise, I, I just think that there should be a very close working relationship that needs to move out smartly to make this happen. Thank you.
This is, my name's Tony Ten Hagger, and I'm going to build on Mike and Fred's comments and suggest that there's an order of operations to take. And I don't think anybody sitting in this room would second guess what Michael suggested earlier, which is that the select board would appreciate a second set of eyes. But that's a second set of eyes on the core work that TPL is performing and that is demanded by the Warren article, which was read, that this process of conducting diligence is to be led by a conservation organization, and in this case, hopefully, one that is providing the services at no charge and having provided them at no charge. Before reaching out to someone to provide a second set of eyes, it only makes sense from an order of operations and from a fiscal responsibility perspective on behalf of the town to enter into the core agreement with TPL first, to have a firm understanding of the scope of responsibilities that TPL will perform. And then with that understanding, tailored in RFQ needed by the town to reach out to somebody to assist them in understanding the diligence work, because nobody here would expect every person on this board or anybody in this room to have the level of expertise that TPL does and that any sort of real estate contractor would have. But you can't go out and contract for somebody with an uncertain scope that may or may not provide engineering services or may or may not provide diligence and expend the town's resources without first understanding the core responsibilities that TPL will perform and that are demanded by Warren. It's not TPL, yes, TPL is offering, but the, the use of TPL is effectively demanded by the Warren article and that a conservation work organization leads this. Once that's secured, once that's in place, then if the select board, working together and with consideration to the budget that would be spent and the scope of services, wants to issue an RFQ, I don't think anybody here would second guess that. But you can't, I would, I would suggest that it's inappropriate to do that prior to entering into the agreement with TPL. And so that's the first order, and that's why I believe Mark's recommendation is correct, which is that, for now, table the RFQ, enter into the agreement with TPL, then, once with that knowledge and understanding in mind, then if needed, bring in somebody to assist the board in interpreting this information. That's my recommendation, and I support Mark.
Thank you, Tony, for very elderly, you know, but that I believe is what we're all looking for clarity on. Hopi, are you planning to enter into this agreement with TPL for this project?
I don't know yet. And I'll sit here and I'll read this and I'll tell you, and Fred, you may or may not appreciate this split up, I'll say, reading this in the alter, AKA arguing in the alter, and all in collaboration with and facilitated by conservation organizations that will provide copies of title, property, environmental assessment in a phrase that will pass date November 11. This is not an exclusive, I can argue that that is not exclusive strictly to TPL. Had it been made to be exclusive to TPL, it would have said so. It did not say so. And I do not see that as precluding us from considering other courses of action to ensure the fiscal responsibilities of the town are maintained as we move forward in this process.
Well, I, I, I understand something. The RFQ is not, is not contracting with anybody.
Right now, I'm looking at RFQ though, I, look, you may please take care of the question that I asked.
I'm, I'm trying to.
I'm not talking about RFQ, I'm talking about while the agreement with TPL that we, as the voters at New Fields, have understood to be the path forward, that is what we understood with Article 1, that TPL is the partner to the rubs for this project and the partner to the town. And that's the narrative we're looking at.
Okay, then I will go back to the points, but in a way, that one, we are going to pursue this all in diligence because that's the role of the town. Two, it is not exclusive, and it could have been written to be exclusive to TPL. Three, again, my point is, I have responsibility to ensure the teaser process and the odds of that, and I, I do not see them as being mutually exclusive.
Can we agree that it makes sense to engage with TPL and understand the scope of that agreement before deploying the town's resources in any other direction? Especially with an organization based on the RFQ as drafted, is not a conservation organization.
Well, then what, then this is right here, in collaboration with, they're not mutually exclusive.
Oh, hold on, hold on. We're, we're going to be engaging with TPL, as, as is noted, we still haven't seen the purchase and sale agreement, we still haven't seen the option agreement. There's a lot of material that we need to be, need to be provided before we evaluate exactly how that relationship is going to work going forward. In the meantime, we put the RFQ up to start to understand, is there professional advice out there that we can solicit? We're not entering into a contract with anybody. We're going out asking experienced people to come and talk to us about what can be done on this project, how they see the best path forward for the town to move forward on this project, what are the things that we need to think about? We're not contracting with anybody. We're soliciting professional advice for free from companies who can come and talk to us about this. The RFQ, we're not, we're not contracting with anybody. We're soliciting and saying, what services can you provide? At what cost? What are the issues that have been involved that we need to understand? This is what the RFQ does.
Wouldn't it be more efficient to understand this, and I heard you say that you will be entering into an agreement with TPL, which is a huge relief to everybody in this room? Wouldn't it make sense to accomplish, to set that agreement first before wasting your time, which I value and I know everybody in this town values, on evaluating an RFQ that it might be too expansive in scope or too narrow in scope or lack the right authority to be?
Again, we're not even getting responses back for another three weeks, okay? I, I, I am, I am inclined to solicit professional advice on this and not say, we have to do business with TPL and it's the only way that, that anybody in this town thinks that we need to do business. To me, that's, that's crazy.
I don't think they're insisting that.
That's exactly why everybody seems to be insisting here, is that we don't go professional help, we engage with TPL, they are in charge of all this, and we move forward.
So, if I could just make a, can I make a note on something with regards to the professional consultants? So the, we are in no way suggesting that Trust Republic Land doesn't have the capacity to do the due diligence ourselves, those will be contracts.
Of course.
The appraisal is competitively selected and last year, the things that still need to be selected are the environmental services, the survey, although an initial survey, they are actually a complete boundary survey, has been done by the landowner, but there's some official documentation on, on survey that's needed, and the appraisal will be reviewed. So those items will be competitively selected and the, the process for this is that we would enter into an agreement with the town to get clear on the roles and contracting, Trust Republic Land contracting due diligence and title was never, excuse me, in a way that is something that the town can rely on for their acquisition of the property and spells out how that due diligence will be reviewed. So that is what the agreement is about. The RFQ puts the town in the position of contracting the due diligence, which would be duplicating and replacing, you know, the role of us as the contract holder with the landowner in completing the due diligence. So to my understanding, the rubs have not entered into a purchase and sale agreement with the town for the town to be contemplating doing their own set of due diligence. We hold a real estate contract with the landowner and need to do the due diligence that's spelled out in that contract with the landowner. And we want to enter into a contract with the town to transfer the property to the town. And as that third-party facilitator, we're making sure the due diligence is done and is, is correct. And if the town absolutely wants to hire a consultant to work with us on, you know, the review of that due diligence, you know, that's an option. How we typically see it is the town's counsel will participate in the real estate transaction, advise the town on process, advise the town on the agreement with Trust Republic Land, and advise the town on, you know, review.
Michael, if I may, I think you guys have a fantastic opportunity right now to help your town together. If in the next 30 days, you know, it will be Michael and Mark, if you spend the time, put real energy, try to get to an agreement, not actually to sign it here, do the work, meet with TPL, lean into it, figure out what you have agreed and done, whether they cover all the bases, but really like, you know, as the town's asking, lean into this, try and make the work. Don't wait for the email, lean in, get it done, if you can't get it, lean in, come back to the company, reason why. You couldn't win with TPL because of this or that. But with the opportunity, they've done the work, they hold the, they hold the sale opportunity, they're prepared to do the work, they have the experience, like, why not just jump forward with it, not sign anything, but put your energy to doing the work? And then come back and educate us why they may not be right to get half your work to do it on it. It's a wonderful opportunity because I think every town feels the select board is really doing the thing he has, collaborating and supporting, leading us through a process.
I, I can understand that, but again, my, my argument here is that the RFQ is basically helping us solicit.
Sorry, I didn't say word on RFQ, Michael.
No, 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 I don't. But what, in, in the context of what you're saying here, is I don't see why everybody is reluctant to have us talk to anybody else who has experience in this. And, and, and find out, are there services here that we need to consider? Are there things that we, you know, are, are there people out there who can help us?
Michael, it's a fair point, would you agree that there's, we know there's a lot of emotion on many sides of this topic, so people are going to get comfortable and get comfortable, so if you need to put some RFQ out, you're getting data, at the same time, do the work to try and make the work to go, not simply not.
Of course, no, 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 but this, to your point, this, this comes down to us getting the terms and conditions of the purchase and sale, the term, you know, the, the option agreement, we've, we've never been provided this stuff upfront. We'll work through that.
Absolutely.
But in the meantime, I don't see why everybody is scared.
It's the scope of the RFQ, it's the scope of it.
The RFQ is asking people to provide us information as to, can you provide these services, what would it look like, what are the things that we're supposed to, to consider here?
It's another source of knowledge.
It's an RFQ, it's not a.
It's not a contract.
It's not.
It's knowledge, it's the scope of it that has everybody concerned.
I, I, again, I think we've explained the scope here. The scope here is to solicit people who have competence and experience in this and, and talk to us about this so that we can better evaluate not only what they can provide, but to be perfectly honest, get a third-party independent review of, is, is, is what TPL's saying what we want to do with it?
And if that's what it said, I don't think we would have 60-plus people in the room tonight, but that's not what it says. It talks about contracting out diligence on behalf of the town for an agreement that the town does not have with the property owner. So it goes too far. If that, if what you just said is what was in the RFQ, this meeting wouldn't be happening tonight, Michael.
Again, this is, again, I, I think, I think you're reading way too much.
Then solve it by addressing the language.
Let's, let's revise the RFQ then, though.
Just to cut from the chase, I think, cut from the chase, TPL needs to get a draft of a purchase and sale, remember, I understand. You figure, then, you go on to that, shit like that, that has to set the ground and say, okay, what are the terms and conditions that you will work with TPL under, what are they obligated to do, what is the town obligated to them? Lay that out and then say, okay, we've got a way, we're together. And then, I fully support you, I did, town wants to approve it, go for it.
Understand something too, understand. We, we, we put this out, and sure, we can go back and look at the language, I don't have a problem with doing that, but we put it out earlier rather than later because if we don't do this now, come September or October, we're behind the eight ball, okay? And again, I provided the language two weeks in advance of this board approving it. If you have questions about it, you have two weeks to supply those concerns and provide it. It was a public document, it's not like we hid this. It was discussed in public meeting. And so, Greg, fair enough, you have concerns about the, the, the extent of it. It is a draft RFQ that we put out there to basically solicit professional opinions about this so that we don't get caught doing things wrong. That was the purpose of this.
So the town works out on May 3rd and then posted a draft on May 4th. So it really wasn't a lot of time.
No, 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 it was, look, two weeks, two weeks prior to that is when it was provided to the board and became a public document.
Can't just buy the board on the 23rd, reset the data.
So when you post it on the website, it's a little more.
Okay, I, I, fair, fair enough, fair enough, I, and I, I didn't know that, I didn't know that, because it was presented, it was presented to the other board members two weeks prior. And when we, when we had the meeting to basically approve it, nobody raised a question about the content or the issues or anything else.
Well, now it is.
Doesn't matter.
But I don't know, it wasn't right, okay, the word was right in the middle, it wasn't right out loud.
Oh, we, we don't, we don't read every RFQ out loud, that's not, that's not what we do.
Well, then why didn't you ask for it to be read aloud?
Seriously, I honestly, honestly, because the meeting was going two hours and you said, I hope you looked at the RFQ and blah, 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 and then, and I didn't, I'm, I'm here a month, so I don't know what I don't know. And so now I ask the, the town to examine this and ask you the questions, not me, it's not for me to ask, it's for them to ask. So it's not my, it's not my decision, so if you want to try to ask me, why don't you, why you want this or not? It doesn't matter.
I'm not going to let it ride.
It's been me pointed now and, and they are responding in kind.
So, Mark, you're asking the members of the board, given your, your stated mandate to, we're the town in front of this board, what would you choose to do, understanding that there are time considerations, I mean, what would you want to guess, we had a lot of suggestions here, what would you like to do? Can you lay that out for the time frame?
My, my two cents here? So we need to get the materials back from TPL to basically start to evaluate the critical issues surrounding what this purchase and sale would look like and how much, Lynette, I think Lynette's now well aware of the fact that, and again, this has been discussed since the fall, if we can get that, then we can start to have conversations about that. And with respect to the RFQ, I, look, my druthers is to not stop a process and restart it. I, again, I have no intention of entering into a contract here out of the gate without extensive discussion and a better understanding, not only with what TPL's saying, but again, what other third parties are, are going to give us advice on. And I'd rather have them come in, provide us qualifications, provide us information as we go through this process, because time is not our friend, right? We, we're already into May, right? I, I, my druthers is to say, look, we all understand, we're not going to contract with anything, anybody, we're just going to be having people come in here, have them understand what the qualifications are, what the process is. That's, that's my two cents.
My two cents is if the songs are pretty good, I'd like to make a presentation.
That may be fair enough, and, but if they don't, then they're not qualified.
But, given this right timeframe, do you feel that you can move forward, working with Lynette, in good faith, with this RFQ out regardless of how, and then you just move forward?
Yeah. Oh, I, I, I don't, I don't think that was ever, ever a question. Again, I think to Hopi's point, our expectation is, is that, you know, the next steps are the purchase and sale, that's going to come from the other side. That's gonna come from the other someone, right? That's, that's coming from Derek and from TPL. It's not coming from the town. So, again, we got that, we got that, I saw that letter. My assumption was is that that information would be the next step in terms of the information flow coming to us in discussing this. And in the meantime, in the meantime, again, recognizing that at some point we're gonna need professional help on this, that's why we, we put the RFQ out, to do that.
So that...
Go ahead, Lynette.
No, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Oh.
How many professionals that are qualified are gonna come forward and give you information, but no product? They're selling a product. They're selling a product.
But, but Tom, if they come here and they say, I'm not gonna tell you, then, oh, okay, well, I'm not gonna consider you to be hired.
I mean, it's no bad...
RFQs go up...
Nobody does anything for free.
Wait, RFQs go up all the time on a variety of things and you get people coming in talking about, I'm qualified for this, here's my experience, here's some things that, you know, I noticed in this transaction that I worked on. To sit here and think that, you know, somebody's just gonna give us free advice and we're gonna run with it? Of course not. But the RFQ process is to basically help us identify what this process should look like, what professional help is out there that we can solicit. Maybe we don't, you know, maybe we don't contract with anybody. Maybe we work through this with TPL. Maybe halfway through the process, we realize, you know what, of the people who came in, we need to hire that guy, he has experience in this problem. Soliciting information is what we're doing here.
The RFQ should be amended, but with the language, they, someone else has experience in land conservation, not development, not development. So I, you know, this was brought to my attention. I didn't, obviously, I didn't bring this up or, you know, take issue with it.
I'd like to just also be clear, we, to maintain an independent third-party facilitator role, we cannot be contractually obligated to the town. The town needs to have, you know, the due diligence completed. We are proposing to complete that due diligence. And that's our biggest issue with the RFQ, is that it goes way beyond the scope of what had been discussed in prior meetings in terms of somebody to help guide the town through the process, which again, Trust Republic Land and, you know, all of our other transactions, that is the role that we serve. But if the town feels like they want to go separate from that and pay money to contract their consultant to help them through the process as well, we understand that. It's items two and three in the RFQ that specify, a consultant will help the town put together RFQs and RFPs, future RFPs, for the due diligence. And again, we've already spent tremendous resources in contracting due diligence and working with the town on that and submitting that with grant applications and then preparing the final due diligence. So we need to be very clear on roles. We can't continue forward with this project in any capacity with the town until we are crystal clear on roles, because we've really committed a lot of resources to this project already. And again, the due diligence is competitively selected. Again, we spent two months hiring an appraiser last year, and I personally spoke with more than a dozen appraisers, and there's very, very few that meet the requirements for those projects. So the work itself is competitively selected, but we need to be clear about who is contracting that. And our understanding all along has been Trust Republic Land is contracting due diligence. And, you know, providing that with the town, the town's reviewing that. That's how we do it in every single other transaction. And again, that's so that we can retain our group party independent role. We can't be contracted, you know, by the town, because that kind of, you know, we'd then be representing the town similarly. We're not representing the landowner, we're not under contract. We have an option agreement with the landowner, but we are not the landowner's consultant. So it's really important to play that independent facilitation role, and that's what we're proposing, but we can't, we can't continue without a clear understanding that the town, you know, agrees to this process and understands and agrees that Trust Republic Land will be doing the due diligence, providing it to the town for review. And that's what we're asking to get under MOU and an agreement on. And they keep saying they haven't seen the agreement for Trust Republic Land, because we haven't heard a response from the town saying they want to enter into that agreement. So I'm not gonna, you know, spend a couple days of attorney's time writing up an agreement before the town even responds to the proposal of that as the next step. So we need to hear if the town would like to do that, understand that this is the process. All of this is normally done, you know, in a very cooperative and partnership way. And then we put together that agreement, we work with the town on it. It's not just, you know, we draft it up, provide it to the town, take it or leave it. We wanna make sure that it's crafted in a way that makes sense for both parties. Right now, the RFQ totally overlaps that role as written, and it's, it's not, you know, a structure that we've been working on and it's not the structure that's specifically written in the warrant article. And I'll just address very briefly Mr. Hartman's comment about that it's not mutually exclusive, it says conservation organizations. That's absolutely right. That was worded intentionally. Trust Republic Land's working in partnership with Southeast Land Trust, there's two of us, so that's conservation organizations is what the intent was there. It's also, you know, if for some reason we don't expect this to happen, or for some reason we're unable to continue with the project due to change in staffing, or Southeast Land Trust was unable to do the project in terms of staffing, then another conservation organization could pick it up. And I think everybody knows we are the conservation organizations that have been working on the project and we are under contract with the landowner. So again, we ask us to rescind the RFQ from the town. This is what we put in a letter. We made a formal request to the town to hold the RFQ, to enter into an agreement with us, to get clear on rules, process, and due diligence. And then if the town still feels like they need a separate independent consultant, you know, to advise on the process and to help review due diligence by all means, but we wanna get clear on those rules first in order to be able to continue.
Is that fair enough?
Then do it. Do it.
Any other comments?
Why won't you just seem to...
They're asking for you to table the RFQ for the time being and to revise it, obviously, and, and to be willing to receive this purchase agreement from Lynette. And again, I will bug her to get, Lynette, we're going to send this, we're going to send this over. So that purchase agreement needs to get sent over.
If the town votes tonight to move forward with that, then yes, we will put it together.
Would you like to move forward with receiving an agreement?
I've been waiting to receive materials from that for quite some time. Would that be a yes?
I motion that the select board receive the purchase agreement from TPL.
Great. I'll second that motion. Okay. Hey, excuse me. I'm sorry. Hold on, hold on, hold on. We're not running the meeting. Don't, don't do that.
You're taking advantage of him forgetting one part that he said three times.
I am sure he can make another motion. I'm more than happy to, to accept the motion as made, it has been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Now, wanna make another motion?
To table the RFQ.
I assumed you would.
Yes.
I'll second that motion.
Oh, those are two separate thoughts, so...
I have no problem with that. I don't want members of the public to try to run the meeting.
Yeah, okay. Sounds good. So all in favor?
All in favor? There's a minute second. There's a minute second. Yeah, well, again, we'll table for a minute. All in favor?
Aye.
Fine. Great.
Look at it, look at it somewhere, aren't we? Mark, can I ask one quick question? You used it for a purchase agreement, but I think what I'm hearing Lynette say is, we wanna work on, beyond providing a purchase agreement, we wanna work on a memorandum of understanding with the town. And when will that be accomplished? Because I would like to think that in thirty days in a year, at least it was a good faith effort, and so I don't know if rules are ordered for how you make that motion, but if obviously we receive how you're making a motion, that we would have a thirty-day effort.
I would presume, I would presume that TPL is gonna be forwarding some kind of an agreement like that, which will take under review. We're gonna have to talk to a legal consultant, we're gonna have to evaluate it. But again, in my opinion, this is where, as you noted, having people with experience and outside knowledge about how these transactions work, I don't think that we're gonna get an MOU and sign off on it, because there's gonna have to be a lot of work done on that aspect.
So, Michael, totally respect that.
Let's cut a time frame, Mark.
What I'm asking for is a good faith effort in thirty days, because a purchase agreement is just one element. What really matters here is the groups coming together, to start understanding roles and responsibilities, and getting that accomplished. And that will take one thirty days, and we have to start that.
What I need to see is a document that includes with all four corners of every page terms and conditions and how this is gonna move forward. Certainly not, certainly not, sign my name off to, well, we're gonna do this and we're gonna give the...
Boy, I would ask you to sign that.
Well, but I mean, there's been a lot of pressure. John, there's been a lot of pressure in that direction, and I'm not gonna...
Sure. My question to you, OBP, can you work in good faith? I'm not suggesting you can, but can you work to try and drive to the MOU framework? And then that will be comprised of a number of four corners of documents that you will sign off on, get third-party help where you need. But you have to kinda engage with TPL to say, what is the structure, what are the roles and responsibilities? And if there's elements you need, like, I can't even engage until you give me a purchase agreement, fine, clarify that, make it really well understood.
There will have to be a significant exchange of information back and forth, clarification, because you can look at this one paragraph right here, it was in Article One, and it's something that's double interpretations, hundred percent.
Always engaged. When I'm asking you to also engage in the process, Paul.
And well, I referenced earlier that, and we'll, and it's gonna happen.
Perfect, well, that's all that's...
But...
And I'd make you feel a lot better than that, so...
But, but I've gotta, I've gotta get a tease for us here. I would not subject this town to liability, fiscal liability or partisan future legal actions, because we feel to do our job.
Yeah, I understand that. And then I think that, you know, life is always being controlled, you're making a choice. Look at some of the other groups before us and say, talk to Randolph, talk to some of the others, understand how they went through it, and be an agent to make it happen. And there's every risk, figure out how to, yes, do those risks.
And mitigate the risk by giving knowledge, Sean.
Yeah, acknowledging risk or you're deciding not to move forward because of risk. Be the agent that finds those things out for us.
All right. Moving on.
Good, good.
Lynette?
Oh, sorry. I wanted to ask, and I really apologize, because I think the speaker works well for going out, but I haven't been able to hear, I haven't been able to hear about half of what was said. So with this agreement, I think the motion was to hold the RFQ and to move forward on an agreement that we'll prepare. I wanted to ask if the town has engaged town council. Again, there's a lot of concern, understandable concern about the town getting proper counsel on the project. I know we had proposed back in February the deliberative session after making amendments to the warrant article to address some of these exact considerations being provided. Has town council been engaged to review the final warrant article as it was passed and to advise the town on the process? Will the town council be available to review an agreement with the town?
Well, town council has seen the final warrant article, they were aware of that throughout the process. Obviously, if and when we get an MOU, a purchase and sale or other documentation, town council will be engaged. He's well aware of what's going on and that the town will be calling on him when we get the documents for him to review.
And I'm, so I'm just following from that, I'm curious, is the town, this RFQ was issued to get advising on the due diligence process. Again, typically that's handled by attorneys, town council reviewing due diligence. Is that a role that the town perceives engaging council?
Well, again, I...
Due diligence, or do you wanna separately contract?
I think that's gonna be, you know, part and parcel of the materials that you provide back on, again, if we're engaging with TPL, what that process looks like, who are the parties involved? So I think exactly what role our town council will play, or whether we need outside counsel with more experience in land transactions, I think that's all gonna be dictated by the materials that you provide us and how we have those conversations with town council.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. All right.
Fred?
Good question. So is the select board's view that TPL is the presumptive partner in going forward?
I think TPL is, is right now first in line to provide us with a working engagement, which we'll review. In the meantime, I think it's incumbent upon us to solicit other opinions on how to move the process forward from people far more experienced than we are.
If I could be helpful to reach out to those, in terms of the multitude of communities that we have dealt with, maybe not specifically Lynette, but things like that, it'd be free to reach out to them if you have a question in regards to the process.
My name's Wayne, hi, I'm a land conservation director for Southeast Land Trust, and I think the board or business that was mentioned earlier will be really helpful for getting information for this board, much like they did with the Scouse Greenway, having outside advisors, advisors reviewing the due diligence is very smart. And as if I were a citizen of Newfield, I too would want you to do that, so a hundred percent agree. I think through the process of talking with TPL, you're gonna learn a lot about, that can help you shape that RFQ so you get good information back from those consultants. You know, I'm looking at that RFQ, a lot of the contract work that is done for due diligence has to be done to different standards. People have mentioned Yellow Book, and nowhere in the RFQ is it talking about these different funding programs that are being used that are really driving how that due diligence has to be done. So I think you all will get much more informed through this collaborative process that we're building here tonight, so that you can then put out a really good RFQ and get really great information and help advise you. So I'm really happy with the way I think you're going. Thank you.
All right. Still have a lot of work to do tonight. Next up, let's hit correspondence on the Vern and Family Farm.
Thank you, Lynette.
It's nine o'clock, so a couple things. So we've received several correspondents with ranging concerns and questions about activities at the Vern and Family Farm. My suggestion is, is that we defer this for next meeting, if only because one time in two, I think that it would be worthwhile to have a conversation with town council and get more information as to his perception as to compliance and the notice of decision and the other matters that were raised. But I'm open, I'm open for more discussion as to thoughts on that.
This, this is gonna be in depth of discussion.
Yeah.
And it's gonna take a lot of more than what you've done prior.
In regards to, can you just...
The Vern and Family Farms, the letters. Yep, by others, the Vern and Family Farm.
Okay.
My brothers is, is to basically defer this until next meeting. And again, we can get better information about town council and the notice of decision compliance, which will play into, I think, some of the issues raised by the others.
And if I could ask respectfully, when there are documents, if you would email these documents, I have them on file, I'd like to receive documents by email, each and every time.
You are on email.
Well, yes, just talking about, like, for instance, the RFQ. You know, I may, I may have bypassed it, it was handed to me possibly. I'd like to get... I'd like to get those things emailed to me so I have them, I can look on a screen and read the document instead of this 1978 system of paper.
Kind of analogous to, if you address one member of the board, see the entire board out, so we're all kind of, so.
Say that again.
All right, all right, we're not going to run down this, all right. I'm going to defer the discussion about the Vern and Family Farm, so we put that on the agenda for next meeting, Keisha. All right, next up, Health and Human Services donations. What is this in reference to, Keisha?
That's community contributions that we make.
Oh, yeah, let's do that next meeting. We'll circulate and talk about that in the next meeting. Revenue and expense, did we have a revenue expense for April?
I'm not trying to be difficult, I just want to see it, be able to reference it back on email. What are you referencing? I said I would like to receive these by, via email, by the, in the future, I can reference these things.
Thank you.
On the email, on the email thread.
Are you talking about the revenue expense report?
Just talking about in general. I'm asking if you could please make sure, any documents that were going over, that you would please email us.
With respect to the revenue expenses, I'd suggest you have a conversation with Donna Newman, she's the one who puts this out and provides that. Any questions or comments about revenues expenses to April 30th, 30th of the year three? Everything looks fairly in line, most of the departments are actually well within budget. Prior meeting minutes, Keisha had forwarded minutes for the April 23rd meeting, correct?
Yes.
She had sent this around earlier.
With corrections today, right, Keisha?
I did, the correction is yes, and I know that the last one's on that page.
You want to slide it to the other side?
Yeah, we can slide it to the last meeting. We'll hold off on approving the April 21st, till next meeting. Great. Universalist Society exemption. So we have a request by the community church, First Community Church, for a charitable organization exemption. For to be in front of you. Basically requesting to be treated as a nonprofit with respect to property tax, this is reviewed by Rod Wood.
So we're renewing this.
Yeah. It's just a request for tax for 2024. Any questions, concerns?
No.
I'll make a motion to approve the institutional exemption for the community church for 2024 as recommended by Rod Wood, our appraiser. All in favor? Today is the 7th? Which is crosses? And the last item on for open item is appointee for Jeff Kutter for Conservation Commission. Is there a motion?
A motion to have Jeff Kutter back on the Conservation Commission.
For a reappointment, second?
Come on, guys. Let's start with that, a positive move forward.
Really? Well, I'll say this, nobody's come forward in the last two weeks. I'll second the motion.
Fantastic, congratulations.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Two, one. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Hope.
You should go with the lady, Jeff, to make a little apology.
All right, any other open business that anybody wants to cover for tonight?
Uh, no.
Mark, do you have anything else from my end?
No.
Just as a reminder, celebration 175th and 19th of 26th, you can buy house tour tickets downstairs and online. There's a historical night, the Thursday of that week. The activities are Saturday and Sunday. Hopefully, the turnout will be good and the weather will be better. So just as a reminder to everybody, I also want to, I'm not sure we're having a meeting before all that gets started, but I do want to thank everybody, and there's been a lot of people who have been volunteering and committing a tremendous amount of time for that activity. If you see them, thank them. It should be a great event, and they have been putting in a tremendous number of hours for that celebration. So in addition to obviously the Memorial Day Parade on that Saturday. Yeah, it's going to be nice. Phyllis?
And just a quick from the town cleanup day.
Oh, yeah.
We had wonderful volunteers, the garden club did a terrific job, and so I entered the 175th, there's a lot of stuff that's all pretty good.
There's a lot of garbage out there, not many choices.
Thank you for doing that every year for us. Make the motion to adjourn at 9:13. Saying, do I hope you all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thanks for celebrating.